Oh, you know what? I've got the one in your signature folder, correct? I could take that one.
We're on.
Oh, wow. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for filling in the spots. To the public at home.
This is the coolest house we've had for a while.
Yeah, sure. To the public at home, we're waiting to make sure everybody's in that needs to be in for this portion. Great. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the Monday, December 13th, school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Inspector Walker?
Here.
Inspector Roche?
Here.
Inspector Weber?
Here.
Inspector Lalaberty?
Here.
Inspector Aaron?
Here.
Inspector Felton?
Here.
Chair Diaz?
Here.
At 7:00 present at 6:01.
Wonderful. If you could all stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you. We just have some small pieces of business to get to before we get to all of you, which is our favorite thing. First up is the approval of our meeting agenda minutes. As for a motion to approve the regular board meeting agenda for Monday, December 13th, 2021, the committee of the whole meeting minutes for November 22nd, 2021, and the school board meeting minutes for November 22nd, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? And all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And here we are. Your turn. So, quality and action. Thank you for coming, Activities Director Chad Suckshower.
Hi, thank you Board Chair Diaz, South St. Paul School Board. Thanks for having me here. It's been a while. It's been pretty unique. We're glad to be back and I probably understand the role that you're playing in terms of living by some pandemic rules and some non-pandemic environment things as well. So, we are so excited as an Activities Department to have some of our groups here with us tonight that could get out in December and embrace the elements. I know a number of you were able to kind of catch the musical or be able to see a number of events that are happening at Ettinger or at the tennis courts over at Roosevelt. And I'm going to turn it over to our staff and our coaches to kind of talk a little bit about their kids and the things that happened this fall. And then I'll follow up with elements from there. The first person that's going to go ahead and speak for us tonight is our girls' fall swim coach, but also our boys' winter swim coach that's here. And he's also oddly enough is going to be leaving to go teach some snowboarding. So, let's bring Coach Keir up here to the microphone. Mr. Keir.
Oh, thank you. Just doing my job. So I just have a couple of things to talk about real quick. I wanted to celebrate our, celebrate our athletes that kind of had some high achievements this year. Our all-conference honorable mention list was Anna Erickson, Acelia Gulickson, and Abby Nunez. Included with some of those athletes, we had some new entries onto our top 10 times from Abby and Acelia. Abby has the fourth highest time in the 100 backstroke and Acelia achieved the seventh fastest time in the 100 backstroke for South St. Paul. Our placement at the section meet was eighth out of 12 teams, which is pretty cool because we have one of the smallest teams there. So, I was very proud of that. The other thing that we had going this year was an outgoing senior, Grace Gerton, who had a really remarkable season, set our South St. Paul team record, the pool record for Central Square, whether it be male or female. So, any gender, set the section record and placed second at the state meet this year. And so that was just a few weeks ago, but those are kind of the highlights that I wanted to celebrate from our girls' team this year. Thank you for all your support.
Thank you, Ray. Congratulations.
One of the things that Tyler didn't touch on is we're seeing numbers increase, right? So we're starting to see more participation amongst the girls. And one of the cool things that you'll see tonight, and Grace, who we referred to as the diver that finished second in the state, right? We had a signing day in November, and I thought this was pretty cool to have a signing day for kids going to college. The other thing that I thought was great about it, it was five females.
Woo!
That were signing, right? Yeah. So it was pretty cool to see them sitting up in front and kind of answering questions. And Grace is one of those that is going to continue her college and career plans at the University of Nebraska Omaha and go to school there, but also continue to dive then. So, really neat. I'm going to turn it over to another strong and powered coach, Rebecca Sprague, in the girls' tennis program.
Hi, thanks for having us tonight. I have two of my fabulous players here. Laura, I'm looking at the TV, remember. Lauren Bauer and Emma Chaney. And I'll talk a little bit about their accomplishments in just a moment. But we had a wonderful season this year. We had 26 players on the JV and varsity combined, grade seven through 12. And we were so happy to be back in a somewhat normal tennis season. We were very successful. We started out our season 6-0, which is sort of an unprecedented thing for us, and continued to win some really big matches this year and ended in the semifinals of the section before falling to Simley. But we had some great competition along the way. We also had four all-conference players this year, these two ladies at first doubles, and then Madison Crone and Sarah Winstonson at one and two singles. So beyond that, probably more important even than the incredible tennis achievements, these girls were a gold academic all-state team, which means that they had a cumulative GPA of 3.75 or higher for the whole team. And they're just incredible representatives of our school and our community on the tennis court with their sportsmanship and their leadership. We get lots of compliments from lots of the coaches that we play about what a great group of girls this team is. And then these two ladies this year placed in the individual section tournament. They earned the fourth seed amongst a draw of 32 teams. And they made it further than we've ever had anyone advance in the individual section tournament to the semifinals. They ended up in third place in the section, which was pretty incredible for all of us to get to experience. So, awesome job to them and to their teammates. So, thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
So getting to be able to be at a lot of these things, right? I don't want to call these girls out, right? But they were. They were really fun to watch as a doubles team. And I, being a former coach, really believe in communication, right? 25 years of being happily married, you have to be able to communicate. And Emma is a great communicator. Emma doesn't mind telling people what to do. And Lauren is a really good listener. They are a great tandem as they work together and found ways to compete and make things happen. Madison Crone couldn't make it. She texted me. She was sick today. And the family rule, the Crone households, if you don't make it to school, you don't get to come here, which we can all respect and understand, right? So, great. There's a little bit of pressure on Coach Sprague and the squad because there are a lot of young bodies. So there are a lot of, a lot of people coming back off this very successful group that was beating big schools like Rosemont and Creighton and all those spots. So it should be fun to watch them continue to grow. Mr. Holson, our theater director, I'm going to turn it over to you and if your participants would kind of come up with you.
Chad, before you go any further, could I get those two girls to tell me their educational plans for the next year?
Yeah, well, Emma's a senior, so Lauren's going to be back with us. She's coming back for another year. Emma, how about you? Do you have an idea what you're going to do for school?
I'm not 100% sure, but either I will be going to the University of St. Thomas or I will continue to play tennis at St. Mary's.
Thank you.
That's awesome. All right. I can really, I can get on board with that. All right. Thanks, Mr. Aaron. Go ahead, Mr. Holson. Participants, come on forward.
All right. Well, first of all, I want to thank you all for having us all here today. And I'm going to, I'm going to do a little bragging about our, our fall musical group. But let me first introduce all the kids I have up here. Over here we have Bella Mallor. Bella was one of our soundboard operators for the show. And Kaylee was our other soundboard operator for the show. It's kind of a unique experience in that we usually have our tech director run the soundboard for the show. But these two ladies are so good at it that we had them take charge of that and it was, it really sounded great. And that's a lot due to them. Also due to actors doing things like projecting and enunciating. But we're going to give a lot of credit to the soundboard people, too. We have Risa Contreras here. Risa played one of our leads in the play. She was Nick Bottom. What's the character's name? She was Nick Bottom. Right?
Did you forget?
Yeah, well, I've moved on. Okay.
You are getting older.
Yeah, there's that, too. And then we have Alana Sealsky next to us here, too. Alana played the role of Portia. And that was the only name we were given for that character was Portia. And then to my left is Annie Voss, who played Nigel Bottom. Got it. Brother to Nick. And then Ruby Wilmes, who played William Shakespeare, of all things. No pressure on that kind of role, right? And then Molly Schmidt here, played our jester, not jester, minstrel. And also, now you've got to help me out. What is it?
Peter Quince.
Peter Quince, yes. So, and then I, we got our Spotlight Awards back, actually after I sent my list of names to, for who we wanted to invite. But I can share with you our Spotlight Awards results. For overall production, we got an honorable mention, which is, that doesn't sound like a lot, but it's actually a lot with Spotlight. Our run crew got the highest award of outstanding. Our overall technical team also got an honorable mention, as did our light and sound crew. And that's pretty incredible, too. Our light board operator was in her second ever play. Her first time as a technician. So, but she did, she did a great job with that. We also had individual honors. Outstanding performance in a leading role went to Marissa Contreras and to Annie Voss. And an outstanding performance in a supporting role went to Ruby Wilmes for her William Shakespeare. Outstanding in technical leadership went to our assistant stage manager, Maddie Beaumont, and also to one of our running crew members, Sam Richter. And that's interesting, too, this is Sam's first play. And then there was also an honorable mention, technical leadership, to Amanda Beaumont as assistant stage manager. And then an evaluator, shout out to our, our light, light board operator, who I mentioned before, Maggie Tuhe. So, we're all very proud of, of the work you guys did on the show. It was great this fall to get back to doing, I'll just say, a real musical, back to a regular musical. I think they'll all agree with me, right? They're all nodding their heads, right? They're all back there like, yeah. Right? So anyways, I think my two minutes is up.
I said you were going to have a struggle if that's what you're going to do.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, okay. Anyways, thank you all for having us here and for, for the support of theater and of the arts and of extracurricular activities of all sorts. I know Mr. Suckshower says this all the time, but that stuff we do from 2:30 to 10:00 is so important to the kids and to the community. And we thank you guys for all your support for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. We had so much fun watching it.
It was a great show. A great show.
Quick question for Ruby. How much fun did you have in the leather pants?
I mean, they were hot. They were so much fun.
It was a great show.
Thank you.
And Eric, I think Board Member John Roche said it best when he said, "Something rotten wasn't."
It was great.
Yeah, it's probably that title, for sure. To get such enunciation through the masks was incredible.
Yeah, it was. Yes, it was great.
Yeah, our, our Spotlight judges actually commented on that quite a bit, too.
Oh, great.
So I was very happy to hear that and from audience members and from judges as like. And probably the one last thing I should say here, and I know I'm past my two minutes, but, one act's coming up in January, 21st and 22nd, 7:00 PM on the 21st, 2:00 PM on the 22nd. Some of these characters, well, actually all of these characters behind me are in that show in one way or another. Some of them wrote plays, some of them are directing plays, some of them are going to tech it, and some of them are in them. So,
Great.
And in many cases, they're doing two or three of those things, yeah. So, again, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, guys.
Don't forget to South St. Paul pack a great.
Oh, yeah, give them their, yeah.
Pass it down.
Directors get one, too.
Mr. Holson. Eric. Somebody.
Thank you.
Chad.
Yeah.
Could you ask Eric if he would have anybody share their future plans with us?
Yeah.
Who's our seniors here?
Lots of seniors, yeah.
All right. Okay, who wants to start? Risa wants to start.
Right now, I'm leaning towards going to the University of Missouri in Columbia or to the University of West Virginia.
Wow.
Thank you.
To study?
Oh, to study animal science.
I'm deciding between university, or the UW in Platteville and also the University of Vitabo in La Crosse, Wisconsin, to study forensic science.
Wow.
Thank you.
I am very undecided, yet. And I will either be going to school for theater or for cosmetology.
Yeah, I've had several acceptance visits to colleges throughout the United States, but.
You don't have to. You've got a lot of time. Lot of time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Congratulations again.
You know, and having worked with Eric for a number of years, you know, it's a comprehensive program that he runs, right? You heard tech director, lighting, they get all aspects in front of the stage, behind the stage. And it's important, right, to him, and I'm not from that background, to have a Shakespeare experience for the kids in their four years. And so, this experience is instrumental, and I know it's a huge part of where he's at. So, super cool.
Thomas, no, it's her damas. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Now I'm going to turn the microphone over to our head cross-country coach and her participant, Coach Ramirez.
I know that guy.
Me, too.
You know that guy?
All right. Thanks for having us here. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're doing well.
All right. So, this was only my second year as head coach of the cross-country program. And obviously, last year wasn't super normal. We had a season, but it wasn't super typical. So, it was a really exciting season for me and we went from 12 athletes last year to having 23 athletes this year. So we're growing big time. I credit that to my captains and strong leadership, really because they promote the program and they make it a great place to be. So, in our, we had a few injuries at the end of the season, unfortunately. We had a lot of athletes PR and improve in the last conference meet. All of our runners PR'd except for two of them.
Remind the community what a PR is.
Sorry. Personal record. Personal record. Their fastest time of the season. Evan Hansen earned all-conference honors. And he also, at sections, qualified for the state championship meet. And when he ran at state, he placed, he was 48th out of 160 of the best runners in the state. So he was well into the top third of the best that Minnesota has in high school cross-country runners. So, that was pretty exciting. Our team placement at conference wasn't great, but we're a young team. And four of my six varsity boys, or four of my six varsity boys were middle schoolers, either seventh or eighth graders. And my top female runner was, is also eighth grader this year. So we're looking to grow and continue growing the program and continue kind of, you know, with those athletes coming up and, and getting faster and stronger.
Yeah, that's your legacy, Evan.
So, I had really amazing senior leadership this year from Duffy Gallegos and then also Evan. And I just want to mention the most important part for me was they're really good at creating like a family vibe, I guess, on the cross-country team. And they're all really supportive and welcoming to anyone who joins. So I think it's a really special program in that way, that kids feel welcome and supported. And they have a place to go every day where they, they feel that. So, it's really positive. I'm also really proud of how my kids, and our kids, represent South St. Paul when they are running around the community. I mean, they're all over the place. And also when we go to meets, they represent South St. Paul really positively and, yeah. They represent the best.
That's so good.
I mean, I have a feeling we're going to get questioned, you know, what you're going to do for school next year.
I'll quit. I'll quit my applications right now. My top two choices are probably Luther College and the University of Wisconsin La Crosse. I don't know what else to study yet. I have an interest in philosophy, but I don't think I would major in that. I'll definitely take some classes in that or a minor. But definitely right now, my top two are Luther and U of L.
Are you looking to continue to run?
I am looking to continue to run. I'm talking to the coaches at Luther and U of L right now to continue that, and that'll be nice.
Evan is also the very first male Nordic skier we've ever had. So, we got set up for him that he is practicing with Simley. He competed in his first JV meet last week, right? First time he's ever done it. So, we're kind of cross-training and continuing to do that. It's supposed to rain a lot on Wednesday, so I don't know that we'll get Thursday's event in. But it's been a pleasure. Both Coach Ramirez and Evan helped me out. I had been busy in the fall up until this year. I was still busy, but busy with football and some other things. So I was able to attend my first ever cross-country meet at South St. Paul this year. And I saw where they set up camp, so now I know every year where to look. And now I know where to go and stand and watch and, and the workings of it. And Evan was able to help me out with that, as was Coach Ramirez. So, kudos to these guys for a 712 program, a lot of different abilities, a lot of different ranges. And they're dialing it in. It's really nice to see. So, you can sit down.
Chad.
Congratulations, Evan.
Let's see. He's going to be here by himself, and I'm going to bring our new head girls volleyball coach, Coach LaRose, up to kind of talk a little bit about volleyball season, all exciting things that Tyler has going.
Firstly, thank you for all your support. I'm new here. Chad found me sitting on the sidewalk back in March and gave me a job as a volleyball coach. And I'm also a middle school, high school Spanish teacher here in the district, and I've had a great time so far. Our volleyball numbers were phenomenal. We had 63 girls out for seventh through 12th grade volleyball. We had 45 on the high school team and 18 on the middle school team. So those numbers are very exciting. And at the high school level, we, both of our middle school teams, rather, finished with winning seasons. And it's been a while since that's happened. And on the high school level, we tied the best school record since 2008 this year, most wins since 2008. We had three girls selected for all-conference honorable mentions, senior Riley Castellenda, junior Olivia Bonk, and freshman Elena Peniotopoulos. And I think more importantly than anything that we're doing on the court right now, we're just building a really cool program and a culture around volleyball right now. We're really having a lot of cool young women leaders in our building that I know you're going to be seeing a lot of in the coming years. And whether, I think volleyball is going to play a big part in their lives, and I can see that happening every day. Tomorrow, we'll log our 100th weight room hour for some girls that are volunteering to come in after the school three days a week and weight lift. So, seen a lot of cool stuff, and I hope that with, with your continued support, we can continue to really do some cool things with volleyball in the coming years. So, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
ECA's are just an extension of the classroom, right? And we found a good one with Tyler. He's really understanding kind of the, you get kids involved and you share your passion, you spend time together, right? And all of a sudden, word spreads that more and more want to participate and more and more want to be around. And outcomes on scoreboards and all that stuff that I felt was really important back when I was 30. He doesn't quite have that yet. I know he's competitive, but he's got a better idea, right, than what I did when I was his age about what's important. And so all those other things will continue to come just as he continues to spend time with kids and as they continue to be a part of the program. And he's been a great add to our building, just the ability of Spanish and relationships. He started our Packer Activity Network, the PAN, our streaming thing. So he's telecasting games throughout the winter, kind of in our gym. And it's been nice to work with Coach LaRose. I'm going to turn the next, the microphone over to Coach Sprague, football. Mr. Sprague?
Hi, everyone. It's really fun to be here in this capacity with these two great guys. In terms of football, this is, this is a really fun and different year for me and also a real big change for the shift for Packer football for the last 18 years. Chad was the head coach, and during that time, he had really set a culture and standard of what it meant to play football at South St. Paul. And that's, those are pretty big shoes to follow. And, you know, it's, it's, I think, two things that he probably had said in a number of fashions throughout the years. You know, if it doesn't challenge you, it's not going to change you. And in life, nothing, nothing is given, everything is earned. And I would say that those are two things that I guess I feel like are kind of a part of my DNA as well. And I think that it's also was a part of our schedule's DNA as well. So, we had a, we had a fantastic season, and we tried to take those two pieces and use our season to kind of be a vehicle for us to kind of get those attributes to kind of be willed into the players that we had. And looking at it, you know, as he was just talking about, like volleyball and their wins and losses and how they performed, you know, really, I think Chad's thing was always about trying to prepare people to be a part of life. And, and it's, it's a really, you know, true and evident in a lot of the alumni that we have, how they approach and embrace the things they have. I know Chad's a proud father. His son's on the dean's list at St. Thomas. And that's from just the type of attributes that Chad has tried to instill in our guys throughout the years with working hard and being constant and present. And so, you know, for us, for this year, we had that same type of deal. Our kids were also faced with a lot of real big challenges as a, as a, as a smaller school. Some of the highlights for us that I'm really proud of, that I really think, I really think represented our community well is that, you know, every, every loss that our school had, our team had there against an opponent that played in the section finals. So our district is definitely a bunch of talented schools. And so there isn't really a week where we're kind of just kind of hanging out and shooting the breeze. We really have to go out and play flawless, perfect football for us to be able to compete. Four of the eight teams that we played this year, they played in the state tournament with one of them playing the state championship. So we definitely, again, are playing a high caliber level of opponents. You know, we're the smallest public school and one of the smallest schools in our, in our district. So with a lot of the, all the public schools are just about twice the size of us, you know, our enrollment's listed as 743, all those, you know, Hastings, Tarden, and Jefferson, and being 1,415, 48 and 11 something respectively. So these guys definitely have a tough challenge each and every week. And that's, and that's pretty, it's pretty exciting to get to go out and play good, good people. And it's great preparation. And if they can, you know, have success like Chad's son has had in the future through doing things like this, then we'll feel pretty good when we go to bed at night. We had six all-district players on our team this year. Alonso Dadi was a fantastic person and a great contributor in practice. And that was, that was probably the thing I remember the most, is him addressing and knowing people's names, people that he hadn't really been around. And that was, it was great to see that, that type of leadership and style. Tay and Trey Harmon are identical twins who are also just the heart and soul of our defense. And Trey was our defensive player of the year for the district. And he got a lot of recognition from other coaches and compliments. And he's just a great, outstanding guy. And his brother Tay is, is, you know, virtually identical in his, his numbers and, and his demeanor. And so it was a real blessing to get to have those guys be a part of our team. Kevin Flippin, whose heart is as big as his voice is deep, he also did a great job in playing basically every position we ever needed him to. And then we have, you know, these two guys are here, Matthew Lee and Brandon O'Gran, both people who are just fantastic. It was really great, I think, something that stands out about these guys is, you know, Brandon earlier on in the season had talked to Brandon about playing different positions because we had some other guys who were also really talented. And just in that true kind of standard and culture that Chad has tried to set is kind of like, what's best for the team, I'll just do that. And it kind of just, not rolls over, but. And it kind of just, not rolls over, but just kind of, you know, graciously steps to the side and says like, give me a task and I'll do that. And that's, that's what we want in every profession, somebody that doesn't whine about stuff, they just work hard. And then with Matthew, something I thought was super great is Randy Shaver had sent out emails periodically throughout the year asking about players who he thought should be on like the All-Metro team. And one time he wrote about this linebacker at Holy Angels and said like, what do you think about this guy? You played against him, how does he look? And like, you know, me, I have a really, I'm not, I try to grow, but I'm really kind of petty. I respond, I respond like, you know, we have this junior named Matthew Lee, and he's actually better in every aspect. I've got some great film of them going toe-to-toe and every single time, Matthew, who was a junior and somebody you really want to have your eye on, he outran him every single time. He'd break his tackles and he would tackle him. So really, the guy you're talking about has a nice flashy name, but really, the guy you're looking for is standing right next to me. And so, you know, that's just that type of thing, because he wouldn't know it. He, Matthew's just as quiet as, you know, as the day is dark right now. So really, it's really been a joy to be able to try to fill the shoes that Chad has built and try to keep the tradition that he's had going. And I'm looking forward to getting to try to face those challenges and making sure people know who South St. Paul are. So thank you.
Yeah, I love it. Congrats.
Evan's coming back for a year, so we're gonna ask a question. You got an idea what you're gonna do?
I know what Brandon's gonna do, and I wish him a lot of luck.
What's he gonna do, Mr. Aaron?
He is going to school and he's going to take up welding.
Yeah, that's correct.
At Dakota County. Yes. And good luck, Brandon. It was fun watching you guys. You were competitive and a lot of fun to watch. And, you know, keep up the good work, Matt. You were a junior this year. You got one year to really put it together. So, but it was really fun watching you guys. And I told Mr. Sprague that he should probably drop Tartan and maybe Bloomington-Jefferson and pick up maybe Lakeville-South and Maple Grove so we could have the, even a tougher schedule. You guys deserve it. But it was a great season. It wasn't win and loss, but it was a great season. So.
Yeah, good job.
There's no doubt he has the hardest job in the building, Coach Sprague, because it's one of those things where I didn't know how to handle or work with him. And I wanted to stay away to give him space just because of, he didn't need me around and that stuff. And then it was like, do I want to be around? And then I was breathing down his neck. So I couldn't figure my own mind out, and I made his life miserable by going back and forth and just playing Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde in my own head. So I'm sure it had to be fun watching me on Friday nights pace around the field, not normally.
Talking to yourself.
Yelling time, I'm just making an idiot out of myself. Soccer, come on up, Kayla, Abby. Coach Hart is helping us out. We have a gymnastics meet taking place right now in the basement of Central Square. Mr. Hart is the heart and soul and scorer for years and years and years. So he is busy working that. So he asked me to read this prepared statement about the girls' hockey season as Kayla and Abby are standing here with me. Coach Hart had this to say. I had a great year coaching the girls' varsity soccer team this fall. Overall, it was a positive experience for us. The team saw a lot of growth over the course of the season, playing a very tough schedule, which saw seven top-10 ranked teams of our 15 games. We finished the season 5-8-2 against a tough Metro East and Section III AA teams. We were competitive and felt that we had a chance in each of our games. I was very proud of how the girls played this year. Some stats for us. This year, we tied for fifth in the Metro East Conference, five shutouts on the season here by our stud goalie. Twelve girls earned individual academic All-State honors with a GPA above a 3.5. So a pretty outstanding team earned an academic All-State Silver Award, meaning the team GPA averaged between a 3.5 and a 3.75. They also had three girls earn all-conference honors. Mia LeBras, who's not here with us tonight, Abby Roseburg, and Kayla Matusak, both of which will be continuing to play soccer after this year. In addition to all-conference, Mia was selected as our team defensive MVP, and Abby was selected as our team offensive MVP. Kayla has also got some extra recognition at the end of the season, being selected to the Class AA second-team All-State. So kudos to these young ladies and our soccer.
Congratulations.
You're gonna be asked, we'll just ask a question. Abby, where are you gonna continue your playing soccer in your education?
I am going to be playing soccer at Augsburg University, and I'm going to study physician's assistant.
Excellent. And Kayla?
I'll be going to Concordia-St. Paul, and I'll probably be doing exercise science.
Great.
Nice. So again, right, just that passion as it rolls forward. It's gonna be kind of nice for your parents, right? You're kind of close to home, but you can make it four hours if you want to be. They can make it to all the games. Anything that you would want to close out in terms of soccer? Either one of you? Putting you on the spot.
Closing out of soccer? Yeah, I am just so grateful that I got to play soccer for four years. I am very passionate about all my sports, but I have a special place in my heart for soccer. And I would not be here if it wasn't for my teammates and my coaches. And I am so grateful that I get to play on in my upcoming years. So it was, no matter the outcome, there's always gonna be losses and wins. And I'm just happy to be there with my teammates.
Nice. Kayla, how about you?
Well, I'll just say like the community, just like for South St. Paul Soccer is just like a big like thing for me, and I just loved it. Like being on this team for four years means a lot. And just moving on to a different school, like going to college for soccer will be completely different for me. And it's just a big change that I'm actually really excited for, but also just super nervous.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
You're gonna be sad to not have your connections teacher every morning? I get it. Completely understand. Yeah, so in closing, right, outstanding job. Like these were two of the five that were a part of our signing. So it was neat to see them kind of be empowered and continue to grow. Also, I think the thing that's extra cool about these two that are standing here and those guys back there that are still here with us and a number of the kids that were here, like you heard Eric say it in our activities program at theater, you'll see them all in the one-act place, right? You can step in the gym and you can watch her play basketball any night this week, twice, Wednesday and Friday, right? You can step into Woog Arena and watch her compete in our girls' hockey program. You can go down to the arena and watch Brandon play hockey now this winter, or step in the gym and watch Matt play basketball. That's not the case at every school here in the metro. It's something special for our kids, their hard work, their attitude, their grit, their determination. And that's what we want our activities program to reflect and kind of show. So thank you for having us here tonight. Last thing, and then I'm gonna step out of here. Another cool thing about my job today, I got to recognize our AAA winners and make phone calls home and kind of talk kids kind of through the process. So our AAA award goes to our outstanding senior that has above a 3.0 in academics, has been highly engaged in the arts, and has been engaged in our athletic programs. And this year, our winner for the boys was Jacob Roush, right? So congratulations, John. And on the girl's side, it was Macy Ellis. Both kids 4.0s or higher. It's just an outstanding thing to get to be a part of and get to see. So congratulations to those kids and those families. And I look forward to seeing all of you in our buildings as we kind of go through the winter season. So thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. For years. Yeah, congratulations.
Best phone call of my day.
I bet.
I can say, and this is good or bad, I'm not sure, but the other family I got to call, they're like, oh, my gosh, what did they do? So I always typically get that when I, hey, this is Mr. Sax.
What did they do now?
So it's nice, it's nice to be able to share good news as well. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Great. Well, that's good, good energy. Our next item on the agenda is the public listening submission. So there was one group of three employees who came, and they came to advocate for a seven-period day so that kids could have more electives. And that was something that they were really passionate about. So thank you for coming. We appreciate your feedback. And moving on to the consent items on tonight's agenda, include the financial claims and bills payable and staffing as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Great. Second? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I forgot discussion, sorry. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. And that passes. There are no policies for review tonight. And I'd like to invite Brady Hoffman, the financial consultant, to come up and discuss the public hearing for taxes payable in 2022. Welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, hey.
I don't know if they'd appreciate that at all.
I do.
I don't know. We don't know.
We were hacked.
Like that at all.
Just pulling up his presentation, presentation of good news. Perfect.
All right. So we're at the point in the year where we'll have our annual truth and taxation hearing. So this is a requirement that we need to conduct this hearing every year, give the public the opportunity to speak before the school board will certify the property taxes for the following year. So we'll go over some background information on school funding. We'll touch on the district's budget, the proposed tax levy, and then open it up for any public comments. A couple of things to start with. Funding is highly regulated. The state sets all the funding formulas for the schools. They set the tax policy that schools can follow, as well as authorizing the maximum amount that school districts are able to go out and seek approval for, for levies. One of the big challenges with this is because the state does set the funding, the formula has not kept pace with inflation. So for the current fiscal year we're in, we did have a 2.45% increase in the general formula. And for next year, we have a 2% increase in the general formula. When we look back to over time and with inflation, you can see from 2003 where this chart starts all the way up to current, the blue line shows if we took the per pupil formula amount and just attached it to inflation, we would have $7,461 per pupil unit of funding. The orange dash line is what we've actually experienced. So we haven't kept pace. We're currently at $6,863 per student or $589 per student short. So this is what has forced school districts to have to, you know, look at budget cuts or look to the voters for additional financial support, just to help keep pace with inflation and maintaining our programming. One of the other pieces that affects our funding is special education. This is one of the unfunded mandates that we deal with. So providing special services is where mandated and required to provide those services. But the funding from the state doesn't cover all the costs that we incur to provide those services. At the state level for fiscal year 2020, the state was underfunded by $673 million. They're projecting that to reach $806 million underfunded by 2025. And these are things that then require us to redirect other general resources to support and to cover those costs. So another one of those drivers which can cause districts to have to cut their budgets or seek voter support. So another piece of the unfunded mandates that our current education system and funding system challenges us with. So another thing about the tax levy, so just because our tax levy changes, it doesn't mean our budget changes. The tax levy is based on many state-driven formulas that are, you know, plus voter approved. Some of these levies are revenue neutral. So there's an aid component and a levy component. So if the tax levy amount goes up, the state might reduce their share. So it's revenue neutral to us, it's just who's paying the bill. Expenditure budgets are limited, and they're set by the state with the revenue formulas and the levies and the fund balance. We don't have the ability to just go and increase our revenues. So it's limited, and it's set by the state statute and the tax levies. And so like I said, an increase in the school tax doesn't always correlate to an increase in the budget. So we're gonna touch on some of the funds within and the budget within South St. Paul schools. So we have four main budgets that we have adopted budgets for. So they're listed here. We have the general fund, which is our main operating fund of the district. So we have $44,514,000 of revenue and $44,709,000 of expense. So a slight spend down, but that is all addressed with fund balances. Fund balances we have accumulated to cover that. We have the food service fund, which provides all the meals, food nutrition for our students. Community service fund, which is before, after school and ECFE and other programming, as well as our debt service fund, which is the fund that's accounting for all of the tax levies that pays the debt we have outstanding, whether it's voter-approved or debt that's authorized by other state statutes. So this is a visual graphic of the revenue of all of our funds. So as I talked about, the general fund being that main operating fund, here you can see it represents 86.3% of the revenues that we operate within. Breaking down the general fund a little bit further, so we talk about we have state aid, we have local revenues, which includes taxes and federal. State aid represents 73.6% of our funding. So when we talk about it's highly regulated and controlled by the state, that's where that comes from. That includes our general ed formula allowance we referenced, as well as categorical aids such as special education, compensatory dollars, and integration funding. When we break down our spend in the general fund, so we have our general fund budget, like I said before, is $44,709,000. Looking at this in the program area, so where these dollars are going programmatically, about 75% of our funding goes right to the classroom with our, in the instruction area. We have a portion that goes to pupil support, which is things like transportation. And then we have our sites and buildings and administration. So 75% of where we spend our money is right into the classroom. So now if we take that and flip it by the type of purchase, so salaries, benefits, purchase services. So here, this graph shows the breakdown of that, and you can see 80, just over 80% of our budget is people. Salaries and benefits is over 80% of where we spend. So whenever we talk about being budget constrained, we're people-heavy, and it's all about instructing those kids. So when we talk about budget reductions, this is where the push and pull and the challenge really comes into play because we want to leave every dollar we can and resource dedicated to those students in the classroom. So we're gonna shift gears here and talk about the property tax levy for the upcoming year. Just high-level background, every owner of taxable property pays property taxes to various taxing jurisdictions. So when you look at your property tax statement, you'll see a line for the county, the city, the school district, possibly some other special districts within as well. Each of these jurisdictions will set their own tax levy, typically based on implements in state law. Other entities as well have the ability to discretionally set those levies. As where, as a school district, ours is fixed based on state statute and voter approval. So there's no discretion for the school district necessarily to increase the tax levy. Through the process, the way it works, the county will send out the bills, the county will collect those property taxes, and then remit our share back to the district. So within the property tax calculation, there are over 40 different categories of potential funding that a school district can receive, and those are all set by the state law or voter approval. It's the Minnesota Department of Education that actually does these calculations and generates the report. And so we can then verify and prove that this is what the tax levy will be for South St. Paul Public Schools. So the way the timing works, back in September, MDE issues the initial draft of the property tax calculation. We then have the school board certify that proposed levy amount in September. So that happened on September 27th. Then through November, property tax statements are issued and sent out to all the taxpayers. We are now at the public hearing discussing the property taxes. And then following this meeting, the school board will take action on certifying the property tax levy. So a high-level overview of the property taxes coming up here for the calendar year 2022. It is an increase of about 1.3% over 2021, or $146,000. This is a slight decrease from what was certified back in September. And a big part of that is because the school district was able to refinance some of its debt and actually save the taxpayers $1.8 million over the next six years. So we're starting to see this first little bit of savings, but over the next six years, we'll continue to benefit from that refunding and refinancing that debt. So here's a recap high level of our proposed property taxes. So the general fund is proposed to be $7,691,830. Community service fund is $513,150. And the debt service fund levy is $312,550. So a slight increase of 1.32% over 2021. So when we look at your property tax statement, there are a lot of moving parts that can cause your property tax statement to go up or down. And there's, you know, one of those is the change in your individual property value. Another change is the overall change in the debt, the property value of all property in the district. So these, and then as well as the changes in state statutes, voter-approved amounts. But there's a lot of moving parts that come into play on how your individual taxes could be impacted. So looking at overall, some of the big changes within, going from 2021 to 2022, within the general fund category, a lot of it was related to prior-year adjustments. So the levy cycle works where the property taxes are getting certified in 2021 for the taxes that are paid in 2022, but it's actually related to revenue for the '22-'23 fiscal year. So there's always a look-back period where we're gonna look back and say, we levied based on estimates, how did that come in? So we actually have a positive change of $244,000. And it's a little misleading because we aren't really increasing. and it's, it's a little misleading because we aren't really increasing taxes, 244,000. We're actually having just a smaller negative reduction or adjustment. So when we look back a couple of years, we had some negative adjustments that were significantly larger than they are currently. Um, and that's the truing up for enrollment or actual expenses for some of our programs that are reimbursement-based. Um, so two of those are listed here as part of our adjustments. So one of those is reemployment costs. So we levy based on what we anticipate our unemployment cost to be, and then that gets trued up based on actuals. So we've had our unemployment cost increase, so this is a positive adjustment where we are levying an additional amount of catch-up. But then in our long-term facility maintenance program, this is for deferred maintenance of our facilities, we were levying a higher amount than the cost we actually incurred at the time. So it's a negative adjustment, so it's in a way giving the money back to the taxpayers because we didn't spend it during the levy period in which we levied the funds. In the community service fund for the school age childcare, this is a negative adjustment of $100,000. So this is another one of those that's reimbursement-based, so we levy based on anticipated expenditures, and then it gets trued up in the future. So we anticipate those costs to come down, so we are levying less based on where we anticipate our costs to be coming in. These next few slides are going to show um, examples of how your taxes could be impacted based on this, um, and we're showing it over a span of um, a few years because um, market values have been changing over, over the last few years. So um, within this example, um, our property taxes have gone up 18.6% over this four-year period, um, based on the average data from Dakota County. Um, this is compiled based on preliminary estimates, and it was put together by the district's um, financial advisors, elders. Um, so this chart has a lot of numbers, so we're just going to kind of focus on a couple of the columns. Um, so the columns in gray represent the estimated market value for your 22, 2022 property taxes, so the market value of your home. The next column over shows what your property taxes would uh, be hypothetically um, for 2022, and then the far-right column shows what that change is from prior year. So when we talk about a lot of the moving parts, the growth that is estimated from Dakota County from 2021 to 22 in your property tax value is a 6% growth. So your property value has gone up 6%, but when you're, the district's levy itself has only gone up 1.32. So because the overall tax base has grown at a faster rate than what our levy has gone up, it actually looks like a reduction in your taxes, because there's now more people, more value paying that bill. So it's actually a slight reduction in what taxpayers will see. Since 2019 to 2022, it is an increase. You can see that, that's the white column between the gray. So there is an increase over the last four years, but going from last year to this next year is a slight decrease. So we look at a few of the home values, so this first chart on the left shows $100,000 residential homestead property, and you can see how it's been a slight increase, and then it's leveled off for the last two years. The one on the right is a $225,000 home, and that's actually the average home value right now with Dakota County in South Saint Paul. And that's gone up slightly and then a slight decrease now going into 2022. Here we're showing a $400,000 home. Once again, it's a very consistent theme where it's a slight step up over the last couple of years and then levels off. And then the last example is a commercial property of, uh, value of 500,000. And once again, they're experiencing that same couple of years of increase and now a slight decrease. And that's all driven by the growth in our tax base and our district taxes as a whole remaining fairly flat. So that walks us through the truth and taxation portion of the presentation. Um, now it'd be open for public comment. Um, and I don't see anybody, so at this point, then we will move on and let's um, turn it over for a discussion with the board and for the board to take action and certify the levy.
Great, thank you so much for that, Brady, I appreciate it. Um, and I would entertain a motion for approval to certify the payable 2022 levy at $11,217,529.49.
So moved.
Second.
Great, thank you, any discussion?
That was a dense amount of information. Very well done, uh, well presented.
Yes.
And this information is in the board packet, it'll be on the district website if people want to refer back to it as well in the future.
Oh, good.
That was great.
Thanks for that.
Thank you, Brady.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Our second business item, um, I'd like to entertain a motion, or I'd entertain a motion to approve the First Amendment to the Jefferson Purchase Agreement.
So moved.
The second?
Second.
Great, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Looking for approval to approve, oh. Yeah, to approve the resolution designating polling places for the 2022 elections. Um, Lisa, can you read that resolution, please?
Sure, it's a resolution designating the polling places for the 2022 elections, whereas Minnesota statute requires the school district by ordinance or resolution to designate polling places for the upcoming year. And whereas changes to the polling place locations may be made at least 90 days before the next election if one or more of the authorized polling places becomes unavailable for use. Whereas the changes to the polling place locations may be made in the case of an emergency when it is necessary to ensure a safe and secure location for voting. Be it resolved, the School Board for South Saint Paul Public Schools designates the following polling places for um, elections conducted in 2022. St. John Vienni for Precinct 1. Precinct 2 is the First Presbyterian Church. Precinct 3 is Luther Memorial Church. Precinct 4 is Dakota County Museum, and Precinct 5 is Capoja Education Center.
Great. Can you take the, oh. Yeah, can you take the roll call, please? Is that what we do next?
Do you, would you like some?
Yeah, just, I can give a, just one more minute of color commentary if you want. So just um, the, this action is significant tonight because we are making Capoja Education Center a polling place again and shifting it from the church where it was last year to reopen in the fall. And so we won't have school for students on that election day next November, uh, but we will have a PD day, a professional development day for our staff during that day. So just a little color commentary for the community.
Great, thank you for that. And do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Continue a second?
Second.
Thanks, Wendy. We had discussion, and Lisa, will you call the roll?
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lallaberty?
Yes.
Inspector Aaron?
Yes.
Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Great, doing one more business item. Um, looking for a motion to approve the 2021, 2022 calendar adjustment, making Wednesday, December 22nd, 2021, a non-student and staff day. For our motion.
So moved?
Thanks.
Second.
Thank you. Board members, any discussion? Dr. Webb?
All right, just a, a little bit of, bit of color commentary again. So uh, in this administrative recommendation, we know that um, it's been another incredible fall during the pandemic, and our staff have done an incredible job, uh, not only uh, teaching and leading and uh, cleaning and cooking during a pandemic for our kids, but um, when, when staff members get sick and you're out for 10 days, we see more and more subs and sub shortage throughout our district. And our staff have been not only doing their regular job, but oftentimes pinch hitting and filling in during their prep period throughout our fall. So in a gesture that we are recommending tonight for the board, we are looking to transition and adjust our calendar by one day, the 22nd, uh, December 22nd, that Wednesday, to extend our winter break one additional day. So this would be for all, all South Saint Paul staff on that day. And we are bringing that recommendation to you this evening.
Great, thank you for that. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And that motion carries. And we're looking to Dr. Webb, um, to provide, provide some highlights from around the district.
Could I make one additional comment on the, uh, adjusting our calendar? We will have our Kids' Choice Childcare open and available that day for families that, uh, if they are in a bind and they need kids' care, uh, will be open, just like we are many other days when there are non-school days. So just, uh, are, we're always a phone call away for that. Okay. And let's put, alright, our superintendent update for tonight is as follows. Uh, we are asking for families to give us your feedback on prioritizing uh, some of our federal dollars for investment, and we know that each family's experience is different, and we'd like you to take our survey to give us feedback on best next steps. So our website is listed right here, that's our homepage for our district website. You can follow the links and fill out that survey. Uh, the board's also asking to complete a survey for the next superintendent. So it's available and open for staff, for families, for community members. It's open through midnight, December 19th, and the website is as follows there. And again, you can find that on our homepage as well. Central Square, winter session. We know that uh, we have a lot of incredible activities happening at our community hub, our Central Square. Registration's now open, gymnastics will open December 21st. Program catalogs will be mailed to you shortly, and that website is also listed on the screen. Educational benefits. Uh, the deadline to apply is December 15th. We want our families to qualify not only for uh, discounted uh, meals within our school, but to have a variety of additional discounts that happen for uh, people that are granted approval. So we want to make sure that you also know that it brings in uh, significant additional revenue that help us pay for paraprofessionals and for teachers, and uh, it keeps our system running when our families can fill out those applications. Next, uh, we had, what a great night with our kids and our activities and athletics coming in. We have a number of uh, celebrations. Our Fall Academic All-Conference goes to our tennis girls' gold team honors. Our soccer's girls got silver, silver team honors, and our swimming girls got silver team honors as well. So lots to celebrate, lots of great kids doing wonderful things in our system. So how cool is this, when the President of the United States comes into your backyard at the local technical college, and some of our staff are able to get access, presidential access, in the house? So three of our South Saint Paul kids were able to have a conversation with the president, thought it was a great shot, um, for them to be able to act as junior reporters with the, with the president. Even our third graders are getting into the political action, visiting the Capitol, touring the Capitol, and really bringing the PYP Unit of Inquiry where we are in place and time to life. You remember our snack cart friends, here they are, hard at work. Uh, we had one of our board members eating one of those snack cart treats tonight. So uh, there's, it's the gift that keeps on giving. Uh, but we just thought you'd enjoy this, the kids in action, they did a great job here.
Yeah.
On here. We have a Three Little Pigs uh, example of Lincoln Kindergarteners, that they make storyboards and they practice public speaking by telling the Three Little Pig story. A great example of just how we try to bring kids sometimes out of their shell, especially in a pandemic when you're oftentimes wearing your mask. It's easy to kind of go inward, and we want kids to be themselves, to get practicing their public speaking, even at kindergarten level, so way to go. Upcoming calendar of events, just a reminder, there'll be no school that Wednesday before the holiday break, we're extending the holiday break by day. And if your family needs childcare, give us a call so we can assist you on that day. And we'll go back to you.
Great, thank you so much. And the last item that we have, whoops. That was my cough drop. The last item that we have is our, uh, board member reports and committee updates. We'll start with Bill.
I was fortunate enough to see our high school men's basketball team play their last two home games, and um, they really impressed me, and they were a lot of fun to watch, and they're well worth the price of admission. So if you get a few minutes and see that there's a home game, stop and see our Packers. Thank you.
One more.
Well, once again, Bill stole my idea. Um, because I had it written down, and we actually sat by each other at the game. I also went to my first, um, Packers, um, boys' basketball game and had so much fun. Um, anytime you get a chance to go to boys' basketball, girls' basketball, hockey, um, it really is um, a cheap date night out, and you really get to have a lot of fun. So just congratulations to all of our activities participants.
I'd just like to thank everybody, uh, staff and students for getting us where we are now through the first four months of the school year. Um, it's been a challenge, I know, and, and you've worked hard and, and got us here. Um, and so I want to wish you all a, a nice break coming up in 10 days or so. Take some time off and, and relax and refresh, and we'll come back at it in January.
Thank you. Wendy, you're all ready.
Yes, tis the season. First off, I'd like to say thank you again to Chad Sexhauer, our activities director, and for all the coaches and the students that came tonight to, to share their experiences on the fall sports. So thank you for coming, and as our winter sports are, are already started and going, we just love to support them, look forward to attending a lot of events. So thank you for coming, and we'll keep supporting our winter sports and activities. As Mr. Holson had said, uh, the one-act plays at the secondary building, the theater program, it's, this time it's called The Strange Case of Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde and Other Fascinating Tales, which is on January 21st and 22nd. According to the website, tickets are not on sale yet, but I'm, I'm assuming that it won't be too much longer, and they will be on sale, so look forward to attending, to attending that. And I also want to put out a thank you to our show choir, who attended the South Saint Paul City Tree Lighting Event on that Sunday night at, over at Central Square. So thank you for, for singing all types of winter holiday songs. It, it was a fun event, and thanks to the city for, for, for putting that out and all the, all the people that came and, and all the guests that they had. So I just want to say a personal Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all of our, our residents, our students, our staff. We look forward to seeing you next year, which is only two and a half weeks away. So we look forward to a safe holiday and, and, and enjoy your family events. So thank you very much, and ho, ho, ho.
Great, thank you, father of a AAA winner?
Yeah, that was a exciting day. I want to give a shout-out to a couple of students who, um, we had a scary incident. Students walking to schools the other day, and um, some of our own students were really heroic in stopping and helping, providing aid for some kids um, in need. And anytime that we sort of see each other helping each other out and kind of setting a good example in the community, is something to be really proud of.
Absolutely. Nikki?
I would like to extend condolences to the Royce Morrisette family. Uh, Royce was the band director at the high school for many years. He personally made a difference in our son's life, um, Chris. And uh, there will be a funeral um, service like two days after Christmas, and then on the 30th, there will be a gathering at the high school in the cafeteria for all, open to the whole community, for people to come in and uh, speak with the family. He was, he was wonderful, and he just inspired such a love of music in the kids in South Saint Paul. Um, so I, I extend my sympathies, and I hope the board uh, joins me in that. Um, and uh, we, uh, we are holding you close in our hearts. Thank you.
Mr. Morrisette was a big influence too for my, my older brother.
Mm-hmm. Um, and, and me. Um, I am wearing, I don't know if you can see, pan up, not on the belly, thanks. Um, this shirt was designed by a ninth grade, ninth grader in South Saint Paul. Um, it is suicide prevention, mental health awareness, and I'll just show you on the back.
Oh, yeah.
When you can see the special colors. So I ordered this, thank you so much. So I ordered this, thank you so much. I'm wearing it with pride, not only as a mental health professional, but as a citizen of the world. So thank you so much for calling attention to that, and I agree with the sentiments of the board. Thank you so much for all that you do, staff, students, who are really trying hard, it's been so tough. And please have a safe holiday season, and we will see you next year. Oh, I've got to adjourn. Hang on. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Great, thanks. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries, and the meeting's adjourned at 7:10 PM. I always think like I'm a talk show host. Signing off for tonight.
Door number one.
Good night, everybody.